Okay, seven o'clock. I'm calling February 4th, media is a planning board to order. First item on the agenda is the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the meeting, the minutes of January 28, 2014, as there were no changes sent to me.
Second?
Any comments? All in favor? Opposed, abstain. Now, next on the agenda is the executive session minutes, but they properly have to go under the executive session, so I'm taking them out of that order and tucking them under executive session at this point. We move on to approval not required plans, and we have one, the applicant is Matthew Rochelot, to combine two lots into one located at 15 Boxwood Circle and four Occam Lane in Falmouth. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Okay, Brian, do you have any comments on it?
It was merging two lots into one, so we leave it to the applicant.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I have just a curious question. What would be the address of it, then?
Because it has two... That's a good question. I don't know, do they choose a particular address?
Coin.
Ah, flip the coin, okay.
Town engineer signs.
Okay, okay. So, any other questions or curiosities or whatever, then I need a motion to endorse.
I move endorsement.
Second.
We moved and seconded that we endorse this A and R.
I suggest that we need to recommend that they choose one address or another.
Brian said that, uh-uh.
No, it's not our purview.
You don't do that.
Not our job.
My experience is the building commissioner, if you're on a corner, can actually let you choose, so it's up to them, it's not ours.
That's what I mean, that we suggest that they choose one.
Nah, we don't have to do that.
That's not what somebody else is trying to say.
Okay, so all in favor of the endorsement? Opposed, abstain. Now, we're going on to the purpose of... The big purpose of this meeting is public hearing of the potential articles, the proposed articles for the warrant, and I want to remind the planning board members, as I usually do, that the purpose of this is to listen to the public, not to join them in an argument or to discuss it amongst ourselves, we just simply listen. If you have any questions of the applicant of the... For the warrant articles, questions are welcome. And after the presentation, we will close the hearing on these articles, and then we will bring them up again on our January 18 meeting for our recommendation to the warrant.
February 18?
Sorry, I'm living in the past, thank you, Ralph. So, the first article is the article to amend special permit uses in the light industrial A district. Who is here to speak to that?
Madam Chair, before we...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
...to deal with 30 notices were sent to Abuthers by registered mail on January 14, 2014, 28 signed receipts were returned.
And this will be Article 10 on the warrant, is what I have here from the newspaper is correct? Okay.
I'd like to make sure that I'm not confused to begin, when you say Article 10, are you talking about the light industrial A rezoning for Courier Road?
No, I'm sorry.
Or are we dealing with Article 9, which is changed to the...
That would be Article 9, Bob, I'm sorry, my eye just...
Thank you. I was curious about that because it's not the type of article that could be noticed to Abuthers. So, with that clarification, for your record, I'm Bob Ha Ment, I'm a Falmouth attorney, and I have a client tonight. My client is Pete Dobbins, who is the owner of the Silver Square commercial property at the intersection of 28A and County Road in North Falmouth. In recent years, the planning board has had a number of articles before town meeting, or other petitioners beside the planning board have brought articles that relate to properties near that corner. And a couple of years ago, the planning board proposed the rezoning of that property, and although the planning board approved it, supported it, it didn't pass, and that was to change a light industrial A property to a business type of zoning. Well, we're here to propose a change in what type of restaurant is allowed in the light industrial A district. The request specifically is to allow either a Class 4 restaurant or a so-called fast food restaurant, as defined in our bylaw, in light industrial A districts, provided that they can't be drive-through establishments, so no drive-through window, provided that the establishment not contain more than 4,000 square feet, which would actually be pretty good size, but also that it really be one of a number of uses on a lot, because the proposed bylaw provides that the restaurant use could not cover more than one-third of the floor area of the building. So, let me tell you where the light industrial A districts are in town, which I think will help you, and for that purpose, I've brought along with me the zoning map. We have some light industrial A districts in Falmouth Village, along the bike path, essentially, the Wood Lumber property along Locust Street, and then properties, most of which are now owned by the Steamship Authority, where the U. Pacquiao League was written, along Palmer Avenue. And then there's an area where you might call the library, located for a couple of years, a few years ago, that's along Old Palmer Avenue. Some light industrial A town district in there. And then we have the Lawrence Lynch property on Griffith Street, the light industrial zone also includes a little bit of a home port development with mostly medical offices in that area. Over here, we have some light industrial zone, which is on Spring Bar's Road, and this is the Trade Center, and property owned by the town with a recreation and maybe some other future to it. Out on the East Falmouth Highway, on both sides of the street, at Falmouth Lumber, there's light industrial A zoning. There's a little bit of light industrial A district here, farther out into East Falmouth, and I think that's where Rocky's Gym is, and there's some automotive use out there as well. And as we get farther up north in Falmouth, there's light industrial A district near the Technology Park, which is here, this is along Thomas Landers Roads, Contractor's Yards, until recently, or I guess still, the Hackney Precast, and this is the area where the hockey rink has built its new rink, and the Steamship Authority will have significant parking in that area. And Antrim Drive, where Taladine has its manufacturing facilities, doctor's offices, some other businesses. And then there's this little area relative to the others that's light industrial A, might have been appropriate at one time, was along the railroad tracks, planning board suggested a change, but it hasn't happened. So, we have light industrial A district. And I'm here because the owner of that property, the owner of Silver Square, actually has a specific use in mind for the property. For a couple of years now, the franchisee who operates the Dunkin' Donuts, that's at the post office right up the street, has wanted to relocate to the building. No drive-through, just like there's no drive-through at the post office, North Falmouth Post Office, a few hundred yards north. But it's a better location for all sorts of reasons. I think everybody knows there's a parking traffic problem at the post office, and this would be a good thing to move down to this location. Now, sometimes you actually rezone, make a rezoning in the bylaw for a specific project, but I don't need to ask you to do that, because this is just a make-sense proposal in any event. It's actually counterintuitive that you wouldn't be able to have quick food, shall we say, fast food, in a light industrial A area, where you have a lot of people working with probably short time for lunch hour, and a fair number of visitors from out of town. It just seems to make sense, especially as almost an accessory use, the way this bylaw has been drafted, and I must say, with Mr. Curry's help, to require that it only be a smaller portion of whatever building there is, and that there be limits, and it's not for a drive-through establishment. So, what is it that you can't have now in the light industrial A district? But you can have restaurants there, you can have the kinds of restaurants where you sit and linger for a while. So, again, it's probably not the kind of restaurants you'd expect to find in the light industrial A district, but you might. A fast food restaurant is a restaurant where the food is pretty much ready to go, where it's prepackaged, served in disposable containers, and doesn't take virtually any time to get it when you go in. So, there are a number of kinds of restaurants, and we think of the big national chains, but they're not interested in these spaces of drive-through. Some might be Dunkin' Donuts, and this is exactly the case, in this case. So, we're asking to be able to have a fast food restaurant, a place where you can get food. I mean, you can do this if you had a store there, you can... That is, if your Dunkin' Donuts were inside a convenience store or a gas station, where you could do that. Then there's an exception to what's allowed, what's defined as fast food, but if it's just the restaurant itself, then there is no exception for the definition of fast food. Falmouth has a table of restaurant indicators in your bylaw, some of you may not know that, but you do, and we decide what restaurants can go where by looking at the table of indicators, whether you pay for food in advance, whether the utensils are disposable, whether the advertisement is on a national basis, whether the service is breakfast, lunch, and dinner. All these different variables give different point values, and a Class 3 restaurant is allowed in a light industrial... A Class 3 restaurant means you add up all of these variables, and if they come to, I think it's between 265 points and 299, it's a Class 3 restaurant. But the fast food isn't allowed, specifically because that's what the bylaw says. So, we're asking that you allow that kind of a restaurant, or include in a Class 4 restaurant, so you did up a typical Dunkin' Donuts with no drive-through. It would be a Class 4 restaurant if it had 26 seats. It would be a Class 3 restaurant if it had 25 seats, because there's 15-point swing in that calculation. We don't really care if the Class 4 or the Class 3 restaurant is what would be allowed, but it just doesn't seem like that should be indeterminate. This is a proposed... This proposed bylaw is a special permit use. You'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals to be able to have the Class 4 restaurant or fast food restaurant in a light industrial A district. So, it would get reviewed, and Abuthers would be notified, of course. So, by recommending this to town meeting, if you're inclined to do that, and if town meeting should vote to add this special use... Special permit use to the bylaw, then we could move the Dunkin' Donuts that's presently at the post office in a business district down the street to a property which is still zoned in light industrial A, but knowing that that type of a restaurant would be actually a useful use in a lot of the other industrial A zone properties in town. So, I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have.
So, I didn't... Not sure if I understood, did you say that you could now get a special permit under present conditions to do this restaurant?
No, because there is no special permit available to have fast food in a light industrial A district.
I see, but...
And whether or not there's a drive-through, this type of restaurant would be classified as fast food, even if on the table of indicators, because the number of seats was low, and so on, even if it was a Class 3 restaurant, which is allowed. So, really, presently, we're regulating whether people, you know, really what kind of food they go get during their lunch hour or on their way to work.
So, then, when you mentioned the special permit, did I understand you to say that even if this zoning change were made, you would still need the special permit process? Is that...
Well, yes, because we have all kinds of uses which are allowed in the bylaw, but not without some review. So, this would require a review.
Even after the zoning change?
Yes, and while you're asking the question, makes me think, maybe you think, why should it? We're not... Requiring a special permit is usually thought of as being more protective, making sure that the restaurant really is going to operate the way we're proposing it to, and these type of restaurants, even if it doesn't have a drive-through, could generate a fair amount of traffic, as people stop for them, and I think that it's fine for the planning board to review it, for a site plan review, and for the board of appeals to look at it under special permit process.
Just to clarify, then, so if this zoning change were to happen, a special permit would still be required because of the language in the change itself? Is that...
Well, it's really where we're putting it, in the bylaw.
Okay.
We're proposing it in the portion of the light industrial A district that are special permit uses.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's fair to say that, and I'd be even more confident if I looked it up, but I'm pretty sure that even if you were in another business district, that it's in a business district as opposed to a light industrial district, for a Class 3 restaurant, you may need to have a special permit.
All right, thanks.
Ralph?
Having seen this only for the first time tonight, what are the ramifications of parking here? Parking is an issue where you are now located, where the Dunkin' Donuts are now located. How will the parking be enhanced by making it available in light industrial A?
Well, that seems to be a site-specific question. We're not really here to talk about that Dunkin' Donuts and its present location at the post office, but you know, you're here...
That's why you're here.
That just the traffic flow and the parking, to say the least, is not up to the standards you'd like to have. I mean, I think that's the case. I think that for, with no drive-through, that the parking situation and the availability, the layout of parking at this site down the street is dramatically better, without the same kind of conflicts, and without the post office, which is obviously a very high-traffic generating and pedestrian generating location. And as far as the other locations, I think it's probably true that light industrial lots are generally larger than business-owned lots, and it's a design issue which the board of... The planning board would be involved in a site plan review, and the board of appeals is supposed to look at all these factors in approving it, and that's... I think a special permit process is just fine for this, and that's what we're proposing. Where those... That type of question would be reviewed.
Right, okay, well, I guess... All right, that's fine. I guess what I was getting at is the requirements, not having it in front of me, what are the parking requirements for fast food and Class 4 restaurants?
Okay, well, a restaurant of any classification in our bylaw says one parking space for every two seats, but there's a different classification, a different standard for what are described as fast food restaurant and restaurants with takeout. So, clearly, the kind of use I'm proposing would be exactly that. And in that case, it says one space per seat, but no fewer than 10 spaces per establishment station. So, if there's one takeout station and 10 seats, which might be all there would be in a small Dunkin' Donuts, that would be 10 parking spaces required, but it would go up from there, and so it could be... There are two cash registers and 20 seats, that would be 20 parking spaces required. But remember, compare that to a variety of other uses in the light industrial district that would be allowed by right offices or retail, at one space per 200 square feet. So, that would be, in a 2,000-square-foot establishment, 10 parking spaces, and in a 4,000-square-foot establishment, which is the largest that's allowed under this, it would be 20 spaces. But, of course, that's exactly what the board of appeals should look at, the adequacy of parking and other uses on the site.
Right, I can understand if this... If a fast food or a Class 4 restaurant were freestanding and not sharing parking places with other establishments, but in this case, that, in particular, the... This example, I'll put it that way, okay? This example, where it would be sharing spaces with other establishments, not having done this before, how does... How are those, and maybe you're familiar with it, how are those shared spaces counted for the different establishments in a larger parking lot?
Well, first, we have some experience in Falmouth with exactly that situation. There are, or have been Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts in the Driftwood Plaza. There's... There was one out at Old Meeting House Road, across from Davisville Road, I forget the name of the plaza, but, you know, before the newer facility was built a few years ago. So, we have experience with that type of thing. And in a plaza, a shopping center, you know, there sometimes is designated parking, that's really a tenant landlord issue. I'm not sure I recall the board of appeals or planning board designating parking like that. Sometimes they would, though, for instance, recently, with regard to, right here on Main Street, for Stone Love &amp; Pizza, to be able to... They were required by the board of appeals to have a dedicated parking spot behind the building for people coming to get takeout pizza. That hasn't happened yet, but that's part of a permit. And they also designated, required that a couple of spaces behind be available for deliveries for the two restaurants that are over there. That's the type of thing that with a special permit process, maybe with the recommendation of the planning board, that you have flexibility to look at uses which seem to be the type of uses that are okay in an area, but to make sure, make sure that they won't have adverse impacts which overcome the benefits, and that's exactly the test the board of appeals is supposed to make.
Thank you.
I know you're talking, presenting this...
I called on Jim first.
Brian, I have a question procedurally. Seems we're doing two things here at one time. We're rezoning a piece of property and we're reclassifying a zoning district. I thought that was a two-step process, that we first create a zoning district to modify, and then assign it to a place, or is it approved... Is it right to do both at one time?
The property is currently zoned light industrial A.
Okay, so we're not rezoning the property. So, now the question is whether this fits in all the... Okay, I'm a little sad, thank you.
Madam, I know you're presenting this as the article of general, a rezoning of general application for all of the light industrial A districts, but you're also representing a client with one specific property, and I'm interested in knowing in what other... Ralph kind of touched on this, what other businesses are in this property at present to which the Dunkin' Donuts would be added?
Well, I believe that there is a beauty salon, and I'm not sure I recall what other businesses are there, I'm sure one or more of you...
Real estate office, is there a real estate office there? Pretty sure there is, isn't there, Jim? Jim?
Yeah.
Isn't there a real estate office in there?
North Falmouth?
Yes.
I'm trying to think with a hairdresser... Yes, no, it's across the street.
No, that's...
No, there used to be, there might be a new one, Century 21 moved.
Is that Kenny's?
Kenny's is across the street.
They moved out of there?
I don't know if a new one moved in, there was one a few years ago.
Now, the next question I have here is Dunkin' Donuts doesn't just sell donuts, they sell pretty much a full breakfast and lunch menu, if I'm correct. They are sort of like a chain, so what we're doing here is we're opening the door for more chains that are owned out of town, come into more districts in our town. And I think that's an important concern from a planning perspective.
But, wait, you're commenting, this is for us.
Okay, we're asking questions, all right.
Yeah, because I think...
But I'm correct, this would apply to... If enacted, this would apply to McDonald's, Burger King, Wendy's, am I correct, Bob?
Yes, but keep in mind that we don't allow a drive-through with this. Yes, but keep in mind that we don't allow a drive-through with this.
Don't allow a drive-through.
That's not, that's not the concern.
No franchise, free.
We understand no drive-through.
You know, I think we're getting a little bit off because Bob has mentioned that specifically Dunkin' Donuts, and what we're looking at is a change to our zoning bylaw and whether the change requested can be applicable through all of the districts. No, 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 that's not the point. That's the way we need to be looking at it.
Right. One other question, what is the size of the unit which is being contemplated here? In other words, how many people would be seated in this property, in this facility?
I think less than 25.
Up to 25 people, so that would be three or four booths in addition to the in-and-out, you know, takeout traffic.
Sounds right.
Thank you.
But again, it's getting specific to this contemplated use.
Right.
Did you have a comment then?
Oh, no, I just thought we were getting a little off-topic from what we're talking about.
Okay, Bob.
Just a quick question, who's the special permit granting authority on this, the Planning Board or the ZBA?
Well, the zoning bylaw provides that where there's no specification, that it would be the ZBA. The ZBA is the special permit granting authority with regard to restaurants where a special permit is required elsewhere in the bylaw. I would have no objection.
It's the Board of Appeals.
If it was the Planning Board as the special permit granting authority, I think that the particular proposal needs to deserve approval. And the Planning Board's going to review it in any case.
It's the Board of Appeals.
Are there any further questions, Bob? Okay, then at this point, if you all feel that we have, okay, I can ask, but does anybody out here want to make a comment on this? I didn't think so.
Dotting the i's, crossing the j's.
Okay, they're dotted and crossed. So at this point, if nobody has any further questions, Bob, I will close this hearing. Okay? And we'll move on to the next article, which is in the warrant, it's going to be Article 10. And I do have a letter in regard to this. This is the Courier Road property. I have a letter from Dana Wessel, and he says, "On December 23rd, 2013, I submitted a zoning article on behalf of Courier Farms Nominee Trust for contemplating during the Springs Town Meeting. The purpose of the article was to see if Town Meeting would vote to change the zoning for an eight-acre plus-minus lot adjacent to the newly constructed Cape Cod Baptist Church. I respectfully request to withdraw this article from the Planning Board agenda of today as we are withdrawing the article from Town Meeting." Now, as you probably all know, an article cannot be withdrawn from the warrant once it has been accepted. So when we move on to voting on this, bringing it up in our discussion, we will just simply vote to IP it.
IP, yeah.
Okay?
May I point out something?
Sure.
I think eighty-two bedroom units are excessive anyway.
Eight two-bedroom.
Is this eighty-two bedroom units?
Eight two-bedroom.
Eight, eight, two?
Slash two-bedroom.
That's how he wrote it, that's how he put it in the warrant. It would read better if it was E-I-G-H-T.
Or a comma.
It would be all clearer.
Yeah. Oh, no, I see what you're saying there, okay, I was confused.
And not that it matters, I think there's another glitch there. It's going to be, it would be probably 20 market rate and eight.
Okay, just say eight and then two dash.
But it doesn't matter.
But since we're going to have to IP it anyway, I'm going to close the hearing on this.
Okay, yeah.
Okay? So we move on to what is going to be, what is Article eight in the warrant, and that is residential use amnesty. And I've got a letter here, but I'm not going to read it because I assume that all the points will be taken up with this discussion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And what article will this be? What article will this be?
It's Article eight.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for hearing us this evening. My name for the record is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Law Firm in North Falmouth. And I proposed a residential amnesty bylaw that will allow for non-conforming and/or illegal units to become legally permitted under the zoning bylaw. I think that everyone here knows that there are a large number of unpermitted apartments and unpermitted units in town. I can't wager a guess as to how many because it would be just that a guess, I don't know. And I think it's safe to say that it's a fairly large amount. And they certainly exist. I'm bringing this issue forth because I do have two clients who have unpermitted units that aren't otherwise eligible for permitting under the zoning bylaw. These particular clients happen to be in the agricultural district where there is no conversion bylaw. So there isn't, there is no relief available. So we're seeking to find a way to correct the issue. In one instance, there's been four units for almost 40 years. They've had tenants paying below-market rates, the same tenants for over 20 years, well below-market rates and below affordable rates for that matter. These tenants are dependent on these residences and would struggle to find a comparable living situation at the same price. In both cases, my clients purchased these properties with the additional insurance currently existing. They didn't create these problems, but they're seeking to fix them. The amnesty would seek to encourage owners of non-conforming units to willingly come forward to permit these units. It's a benefit to the homeowner and to the town. The homeowner will be able to legalize the space, increase the value and the marketability of their homes. And the town's able to improve and ensure the safety of these units by looking at the Building and Sanitary Code. They're able to increase the tax base and in some cases add to the affordable housing inventory, which is, as we know, a need in town. Additionally, this will also benefit the tenants. This, this provides affordable rental spaces, which is something we're in need of. The proposed language was discussed at the last zoning board appeals hearing, and they had some concerns, and I've amended some of the language and submitted that to Mr. Curry yesterday based on some of these concerns, because I think some of them are very valid. Even since we submitted that revised language yesterday, my office has been working with Mr. Curry and with the zoning board to find language that will satisfy everyone and while still providing a benefit to homeowners and to the town. One, two, one change we have made is the requirement of a special permit. This should be a special permit process. That'll provide notice to neighbors and give them the opportunity to weigh in. We're willing to extend the qualification period from 10 years to 20 years. We think that 20 years is ample time to, for the ZBA or the permitting process to determine whether or not there's an issue created by these units. We're not seeking to reward people for bad behavior. We're seeking to help people who have situations that need fixing. Other changes, we'd be willing to make any additional unit affordable. Originally, I proposed any, I proposed three or more, at least one variable. I think that any additional unit could be made affordable. There'd be no other uses allowed, this would be residential only. You couldn't have it as a non-conforming use and switch it to commercial accommodations, for instance. And we're willing to limit it so that there's no summer rentals or anything of that nature allowed. What we're trying to do is help people who have a situation that they don't have a remedy for. Some might be in agricultural where this conversion doesn't exist. Others may have purchased properties that they thought had illegal, had legal units and don't. I'd be glad to hear the board's comments and questions and to the extent there were concerns. We're willing to continue working on the language to find something that, that we're satisfied with and really seeks to help the town and help homeowners.
Brian, may I clarify something with you? When we are bringing this up for discussion, I assume we will have what the two of you have worked on as an amended bylaw change?
Right, our mission tonight is to listen to the Planning Board's questions. And if you want us to come back with some sort of recommended motion for timing. Remember, the article just tells timing what we're going to talk about, what we're going to do. And then you can either suggest whatever, or you can suggest a recommended motion as to what we hear tonight, that's what we'll work on.
Yeah, because what I'm hearing is that the article will be amended.
It's, I think it's still a work in progress at this point.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to clarify, okay.
But simple, same point of line, is this language we're seeing here hasn't been amended since it was done a week or two in front of the ZBA? Or is this?
What you have in front of you is the, your language as it appears right now in the warrant, it's unpublished. You don't have the amended language in front of you. It's a letter from Kevin in your foreword. I just wanted Kevin to describe the proposed changes in the language with the board's guidance on that, whether you think it should be 20 years and you think it should be a special permit. We'll go from there before we start. Words to the end.
Specifically, the, the changes that the ZBA wanted, are they in this or not?
Now, what you have in front of you.
I'm not clear, thank you.
Bob?
I, I look at this as something that is more for somebody that is purchasing existing property that they find has all these non-conformities or illegalities. And I'm, I'm looking at it from a Town Meeting member perspective, somebody that might already own something like this. And I don't see any impetus for someone to want to come out of the closet, so to speak, and seek amnesty when you're looking at having to make them apply for a building permit. They've got to, then if it doesn't meet code, they'd have to bring it up to code. They might have to go before the zoning board of appeals. And then there's the whole tax man issue, you know, where they might be taking an income. And then also too, if it has to come under affordable housing, if a portion of it has to be affordable housing, that takes rights away from people as landlords. So I just wonder how you would sell this to Town Meeting.
Well, I think that oftentimes we have, my firm practices real estate law, and we do quite a bit of residential transactions. If I was representing the buyer of property and they were looking at a house that had an illegal apartment that wasn't permitted, I would tell them not to buy it. I think that by permitting the apartments, you increase the marketability, you increase, you increase the value, even at affordable rates. The affordable rate for a one-bedroom apartment, I believe, is $950 a month, which is still a fairly substantial income based on accessory apartment. I think that the, there are people out there who have been cited as having violations by the building department, who don't have a recourse right now other than simply not to use it. So I think those are all draws to people. I think that the affordability and I think that the building code issues are things that are necessary. We simply can't have, I, I think that's, that's the draw for the town by, by ensuring the safety and ensuring that this property egress. Now, in speaking with the building commissioner, in terms of the building code, he'd be looking mostly at what he calls the life safety issues, which is egress, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, in some cases, the potentially sprinkler systems, things to ensure the safety of the occupants. If there's an old electric in the house, as long as it would have met code at the time it was installed, it wouldn't necessarily need to be upgraded. So you're not looking at a complete renovation of the properties. You're looking at making sure that there's safer human habitation, which, you know, are there people out there who rent places that potentially aren't? Sure, I like to think most people wouldn't rent a place they wouldn't necessarily want to be in anyways. Now, is that, is that a deterrent? I think there are some cases where, where people will say, well, you know what? I haven't had trouble yet, I'm not, I'm not going to kick the hornet's nest. But I think there are people out there who, who would like to find a way to make what they have legal, who might not have realized that what they purchased was not permitted and would seek to rectify that.
So I could see how this could help in sales of properties. It may not scare someone off and would also help to bring places in compliance to, to a new owner.
Scott?
So are you looking for input on wording of this now?
I'd be happy to hear comments from the board, I guess.
Well, I'm just curious about the line where it says, this is applied to buildings which have been cited by the building department. Because, you know, people might want to come forward in advance of that.
Sure, I, I, I think the way that's worded, we have changed that language so that.
Oh, okay.
It is people coming forward, but I think the way that's worded there is people who have been cited can come forward and people who, so an outstanding violation, that wouldn't necessarily mean you couldn't come forward.
Right.
It could be an impetus for coming forward.
And the people who are cited and they're faced with removal of kitchenettes or not using property would certainly be happy to do whatever needs to be done to comply, to get the use of their property back, because I've seen, seen it happen to people.
And I'm wondering why only one year? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this as being kind of a, a chance for people to get ahead on problems they might have in the future. If, like you said, they would have to come forward. It may be that this year they can't take the chance, but if you have like maybe three years, and, and it would, it would give people, A, people who might find it difficult now, a chance to plan ahead for it in, in, in another year, and also, it would also give time for this thing to work. For people to see, okay, you know, my neighbor, he came forward and he's coming out of it okay, so maybe I will. I mean, I, I just think the one year seems a little bit.
Frankly, Mr. Latimer, I think it's a wonderful idea.
You know, the statute of limitations on real estate deals, I think it's 20 years or something, so. You know, I mean, stuff like this takes a long time.
I think that's.
I would recommend three years.
That's a suggestion I'll certainly discuss with Mr. Curry.
Ralph?
Yes, Attorney Clower. The one, two, three, fourth paragraph, under number one, it says that the criteria in either subsection 1A or 1B here in under have been satisfied. Is that, are those sections, are those subsections already in the bylaw, in the, in the bylaw of 243C? I mean, I don't see any, I don't see those here.
Sure, that was, that was referring to, if I may, a moment.
Yeah, sure.
That was referring to section, yep, I understand. This was when I originally submitted, this was labeled A and B.
Okay, so that, maybe you could tell us all which.
Sure, and, and actually, I, I brought enough copies of the revised language that I had in it that we can, I can certainly pass out. It was revised and shortened substantially, simplicity being a wonderful thing.
So that A and B is no longer pertinent, right, okay, okay. All right, so C, right, there's one new. All right, thank you.
Anyone else have questions or comments? Bob, you did, I think, right?
Oh, yeah, I was, I think Richard brought out a good point because if you do look down the future, let's say somebody does have a non-conforming piece of property that doesn't go for the amnesty during one or three years, and then they sell it 15 years down the road. I think that would impede a purchase even further down the road. So I don't know if the, if this could be something that could be written as a, a more, a longer or permanent.
That's actually part of the conversation we have with Mr. Curry today. I, I actually had a conference to attend, so I wasn't able to be there, but in my conversation with Bob, who relayed the conversation to me, it's part of the conversation that, that did take place.
Yeah.
So that's something that I think is being considered. And I think in discussing that with Mr. Curry, the ZBA will try to work towards an amicable solution that, that'll satisfy all parties.
So what I'm looking at is that this will take the place of this whole.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, it's much better.
Sure.
Much more easily understood, Jim.
But I don't see in this any reference to, like, right now, if I'm correct, if someone has an illegal structure and they haven't been noticed in 10 years, they don't really, can't do much with it, but the town can't make them change it. It kind of, it's an illegal structure and it's just frozen like it is. How does this affect that? Does this cure the, if, if they have been noticed and they've been told there was an illegal structure, does this now cure that for them? Or forgive that illegal structure is what I'm asking.
They would still need to apply for a special permit under this.
So it does, if they go through the process, that's how they cure it?
But we are still looking for, at this point, we're looking for 20 years. That's one amendment to the A.
All right, okay, yeah, thank you.
Brian, you want to, okay, anyone else have questions on this on the board? Okay.
I just thought about, but 20 years, that's an existence for 20 years, but what if they've been, I mean, right now, you don't have, if you get a notice from the building commissioner, you, illegal structure, you have no standing whatsoever, they can make you take it down. If you were there for seven or eight years, but once the 10 years, I think you're allowed to just leave it alone?
That's a nuanced question, I think, because you're correct in that it would depend on the timeframe of when the building was built. After a certain amount of time, the, the structure is protected, but the use would not be.
So only the structure is, okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
We'll clarify that for the Board.
That's-
I got it.
Anybody have anything, comments? Okay. Seeing none, then, and the Board is satisfied, I will close this hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you ask for permission?
I did. Yep. Okay. The next one is our Board's Medical Marrowan Treatment Center. And I believe that is what Bob read that referred to the public notice. Is that correct?
No, that was the signed, the signed growth article on Courier Road.
Oh, on Courier Road. It was unclear with what he had, which it was. Okay. So we move on to the Marrowan Treatment Centers, which is Article 7 on the Town Meeting warrant. And hmm, if no one there has anything to say, I think I could probably-
We've already addressed this, right?
Yes, because we were the ones who originated it and cussed and discussed it for quite a while. So is there any reason that you want me to keep it open?
No.
Then I close this hearing, too.
We discussed it enough.
We certainly did.
Cussed and discussed, that's good.
There's going to be already two on the case, it looks like.
Pardon?
It looks like there's already going to be two on the case.
Yeah, they've already been chosen, yeah.
Dragging our feet to the trick.
Okay. The next on, on the agenda is correspondence, and they all referred to these articles, the warrant articles that we've just discussed. We have a referral for 761 Teetit Highway 40d application. Brian?
Why don't I put this on the chart?
Okay.
This is a 40d application. It's also now a local initiative program, so the town's a applicant. The proposal is to have three dwellings, similar to 21 minutes, and this one acre parcel on the corner of St. Mark's Road and Teetit House. We would all have a common driveway with one curb cut on St. Mark's Road, which is probably the pressure that's going to put out. They would have a proposed bus shelter here, working with the transit authority for in terms of stopping this situation, if not via standard bus shelter. They're very relatively small units. It'll all be affordable, likely the sale prices above $180,000. And they're not proposing to have any sort of demarcification system because this is a phase one. It'll be a sidewalk extent. These will get into town where the sidewalk appears, but in outside of town right of it. They are currently trying to board the appeals for the, for the people, for the comprehensive permit. They did this about a year ago, and the fund is the found house insurance. All three units would be laundry and would be part of this subsidized housing. Architectural drawings, one of the house, one home will be visible, the other two will be standard. That's all we know about the plan. So it's a referral to the Board of Appeals. Your comments, concerns, passes along, fine. Advertisements, fine. Over to the Board's Board.
Brian, is that a lot mine? So those are actually two lots?
No, it's one big lot.
Or is it one big lot? I see one kind of-
Right now, it's one lot?
Okay, yeah.
The proposal is subdivided into three lots?
Into three lots, okay.
So only one curb cut. You didn't want to have three curb cuts.
Oh, it's much better that way.
That's right. So it's a shared curb cut.
Okay.
Does the Board of Appeals have any specific question for us, or is it just our general reaction?
Just a general referral.
Doug?
So in that area where the bus shelter is, there's no sidewalks on that side of the road, but it is on the opposite side, correct?
If there's a sidewalk here, we'd go up.
But on, but on Route 28, there's no sidewalk serving that. So maybe they should put a crosswalk across there, because people will probably cross the street to get to the bus shelter.
Right, right, right.
Just, just a suggestion, yeah.
Okay.
Just in comment, they've been working on this for a long time.
We've-
I consulted with them.
Heard it for quite often, too, I think.
Yep.
Anybody else have any comments that they want to pass along to the ZBA?
I'd just like to see it move forward.
So would I. I think it's been very well planned. We need it.
I would move in affirmative, Phil.
Okay.
I'll second.
We'll move in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are there any future agenda items that anybody would like to see? Come on. Paul?
We've talked about this couple of words for the Cape Cod Commission as a result of the joint hearing. I don't want to drop that. I think we should put that on the agenda fairly soon. I know you're working on it, but I don't want to drop it. There's some momentum and it's important to keep going.
A letter went out to Mr. Mick Litske from the Sussa, dropped it hopefully around today. We'd like to get them all together and give them a, a, a soon.
So we'll have an opportunity to add to these.
Great.
The other thing we don't want to forget is Sunrise Estate. I don't know where that is, but we've talked about it last time. Is that on the agenda coming up?
If you continue that hearing until, by the 18th.
18th, next week.
Over two weeks.
Two weeks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else? Ralph?
Just to clarify, we are not meeting next week?
No.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Now, at this point, I am going to move that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the pending litigation, the Mammoth Acquisition versus, LLC versus the Planning Board, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the Board. And as you know, it has to be a little call vote so that we go into executive session. Let's start down with you, Ralph.
Aye.
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 I should, excuse myself, I abstained from that vote and asked to be excused from the meeting room. Thank you.
You are excused. And we will not be going back into open session.
Take the rest of the day off with pay.
Right, with pay.
Rich, could you check and make sure that-
The TV's off?
The TV is been turned off.